Let's roll. We start the public hearing first prior to the meeting.
Yep, so we have an opportunity to look at a land and water conservation grant that was presented to me by Keeser Consulting, Dave Keeser, about, I don't know, the end of July. We took a look at Eastside Park and Railroad Park. This grant sort of fits really well into Railroad Park. So Dave's here today for the public hearing portion of the grant application process. We have not committed to anything, but this is the start of answering questions, asking questions, getting to know what the project is, making any changes or modifications if you guys see or feel the need to do that. The time starts picking up. So we're going to turn it over to Dave, just to present the project to you, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so, hey, congratulations on your forty, I think it's forty or fifty thousand dollar housing grant. So once the federal government is no longer on furlough, we'll be able to implement that here in the village. So that came through rural development, it's called the Housing Preservation. So I'll just congratulate you on that first. It goes to low to moderate income people, HBC, roofing, siding, windows, doors. Okay? So.
For the village.
Thank you for the village. I say go for it every year. Okay, so what we're going to talk about here is, we're talking about a playground project for Railroad Park. And the grant, if you desire, if you so desire, the grant is due November fourteenth. We've been working, our team has been working with Brittany and Steve on development of the project. You guys each have a colored rendering of this project in your packet, but I'm going to leave this board with Brittany, so if you want to take a better look at it, it'll be in her office and you can prove us through it. Basically, what it consists of, we're not going to do the splash pad. Splash pad was an idea. We are going, it does consist of a restroom building here. It also includes a playground that's kind of done in the railroad inspiration, okay? Since it's Railroad Park, it's right next to the railroad track, it's kind of cool that we'd have a theme, railroad, right? So we do have it covered, that's what's underneath the red canopy here. We have some sidewalks that are ADA accessible. We have about ten or twelve parking lot. This is on the east end of the park, right here. We're not going to take out any trees as a result of this. We are going to make the playground accessible, it'll be totally accessible. The play surface will be turf. We think turf is the best as far as drainage. If you do a poured playground with that poured rubber, you have to go in and maintain it every year, it's too high maintenance. It costs a lot of money. So our firm right now is doing about six playground projects. We've never had so many. I don't know what the deal is, but it's great. In Indiana, we received, we went after the Land and Water Conservation Fund, Moth Pillar, Indiana, received, they're doing a playground also similar to this, they received five-hundred-and-twenty-four grand. The town of Rusheville got three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. So anyway, but it's a one-to-one match, so for your three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, you have to put in three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. So I'll get into that in a minute. But the park project, these are just kind of some elements. So the current, the current project would be sidewalk, connecting sidewalks, handicap-accessible restroom, the parking area, the accessible playground, and then this is a splash pad. This is what it looks like, and this would be, this isn't a future phase. The splash pad, we decided to take out, out of this round because it would jack the project to about eight-hundred-and-some thousand. So those splash pads are about two-hundred grand. So Steve and I talked and we decided that it would probably be most advantageous to take it out of this round, right Steve?
You said, you said in the near future in the splash pad, because I actually had a neighbor asking me about something like this. Well, how far down the road?
I would say wait, I would say wait till you got this project done and apply for it when you have, when you have your coffers replenished. So I would probably wait two years. So if council was to ask me that, that's generally what I tell you. I'd wait till you get this developed and then the splash pad can go in. And this is what it looks like, I mean, this is, it's concrete. Here's the deal with the park. I learned a long time ago, you've got to nail it down, pin it down, bolt it down so it doesn't move. If you can't do any of those things, then you, it'll disappear, okay? Benches, trash receptacles, playground equipment, it all has to be, it all has to be bolted down, okay? Because if you don't, you'll find it in the middle of the street somewhere.
We've already seen that.
Yeah, so. I worked for a park district for four summers when I was going through college, and it's amazing what people can do in the middle of the night with bathrooms and playground equipment. So it's, I learned a long time ago about maintenance. So anyway, so that's, that's the basics of the project, and again, this is all, this is in Noblesville, Indiana.
I've been to that one.
Yeah, and that's where you ride the nickel plate, you can ride it up on the rails. This is an example of a playground through landscape structures. This is a splash pad, this is at Finch Creek Park, also in Noblesville, off of thirty-seven. If you guys know where Real Off Music Center is, used to be Deer Creek, it's right, it's right by there. And then these are some other ideas that my architects put into the plan. So these are just some concepts, please look at it. Now, cost. I gave everybody a cost, a copy of the cost estimates. So landscape, the landscape architecture and training team, playground equipment is around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We've been getting quotes from the different playground companies, anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to half million dollars. Playgrounds are expensive. Now, it's what you want to put into it, okay? We want to, we want to make it nice here, we want to make it a destination, and we want to make, we want to make it nice for the children to be able to play safely and actively in the park, but we don't want to cost you an arm and a leg to do it. So that's on the lower end. The play turf is just like artificial turf that you have, you know, in a football stadium or whatever, and that lasts about fifteen to twenty years. Again, the poured, the wood chips, no, that gets all over the place and you have to replace it every two years. The poured rubber, we found that it's not very durable, and it starts peeling up and you pay as much as you do for the turf. So, and it doesn't drain very well, it just all drains out. And when you put the turf in, it drains pretty well and it's, it's nice, and it's got a fifteen-year warranty on it. And you don't have to go and replace it or, or glue it down every year, or whatever.
I got a question on that turf. Is it on gravel base or is it on ground?
It'll be, it'll be on a, it'll be on a gravel base, yeah. So like a pea gravel.
So it'll let the water percolate down pretty quick?
Yeah, we want it to percolate down, so. The fun thing about that is, I'm a soils, I'm a soil, I'm a Purdue professor, by the way, too. Don't hold that against me. I teach, I teach soils engineering, so we want to make sure that it percolates into the ground and all that stuff. We want it, we want a, we want a well-drained playground, so it doesn't cause any erosion. The signage, we think, will be around a thousand to five thousand dollars, that'll variate. Parking, we have about forty-five thousand, that'll be an asphalt parking area with, with one handicap accessible lot, or space, or stall. Sidewalks will be around twenty-five thousand to connect the facility together. The restroom facility, we think it'll be around seventy thousand, we've seen those built. You could probably build it, and these are just, these are probably a little bit on the high side, and that's okay, but we, we think that it could be built maybe for fifty-five or sixty thousand, but I went ahead and put seventy on it, just in case costs go up. And then we have Cool Toppers, shade structure.
Dave?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is this seventy K for the bathroom, is that plumbing, water lines?
That's everything.
That's everything?
Yeah, it's site development and it's construction of the vertical structure with everything in it. Lighting, plumbing, electrical, structure.
Running the water lines, would that be covered?
Yes, that's all in that cost. Yeah, yeah, when I do something like that, I think of everything, I try to think of everything.
I was just, I wanted to confirm.
You got it. Appreciate that. I just don't break it out because it's, it is that amount. Cool Topper shade structures for the playground area, we have an estimated around thirty thousand. And then if there's anything that's unseen, that we get in there and, and it's something unseen, that's what a contingency is. So we have about a, about a ten percent contingency on that, about fifty-one thousand, and then architectural and engineering fees are another fifty-one thousand. So the total project cost that we have is six-hundred-and-twelve thousand. The local match for you guys would be three-hundred-and-six thousand, and then they would give, they would award you, if you're awarded, three-hundred-and-six thousand. By the way, there's no guarantee on the grants. If anybody ever guarantees your grant run. But, but anyway, we write these and we think we write a pretty good application, and we'll see what happens.
What's life expect to see on the Cool Topper shade structure?
Those last probably seven to ten years, usually, I mean, if they're well taken care of and...
To replace them, is that something like our little team of, so the employees could do, or has it got to be...
Yeah, those are just, they're basically a heavy-duty commercials.
Tarp thing.
Yeah, shade, shake sale.
Shade tarp.
Those are just put on.
Collect and hang?
Yeah.
Pretty much?
Yeah, I would say, I would say seven years. I think ten's a little bit further out. And so the total cost is six-hundred-and-twelve thousand, and local match would be three-hundred-and-six, and that would, and then I'd say wait a couple of years before you tackle. Again, the splash pad, those are, those are about two-hundred thousand. So we did one of those and it came, the bid came in around a hundred-and-fifty-eight, a hundred-and-sixty thousand, but by the time you get one done...
I have several neighbors that were asking about, you know...
Tell us in the plan.
Okay.
But we're just not implementing it yet, so. Any questions on any of this stuff? Again, the application is due November fourteenth, if you so desire to pursue that and move forward. There is a resolution that's here tonight to go forward if you so desire.
So is there anything built in for like fencing? That's my only concern, is with putting it down there and so close to the railroad.
I, no, I don't have any fencing around that. I have an open, I have an open, you know, most, most of the playgrounds, I mean, Noblesville is one end, neither does Indianapolis, they just...
If everything's bolted down, shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, should be an issue at all.
Well, the fencing, like with kids, like kind of, if you have like two or three running towards the tracks.
Now, now, we could do this, okay? I've got fifty-one thousand in contingency, so I could take some of that and I could put up fencing.
I mean, and it might not be needed if it's...
Right.
I mean, it might be interested in it.
But if it is, if it is on that one side, we could take some out of a contingency and put it up.
Yeah.
Because I don't think fencing along there would probably be any more than ten or fifteen thousand if that.
How many feet from the railroad will the park start?
This would be nearest the walking trail and to the east of where the food truck spaces...
Yeah, there's the walking, yeah, this is the walking trail right here, so it's, it's all east of that.
I see the, the parking, the parking area, I don't know, proportionate to the park, it just doesn't look like it's that big, but maybe I...
It's ten spaces.
How many?
It's ten spaces.
You're going to have a lot of walkers, too, like with it being a walking trail...
That's true.
I'm assuming you wouldn't need a whole lot.
So we kept it, we kept it pretty minimal. We even thought about maybe not even putting in a parking lot. I mean, we might get to that point where, do we really need a parking lot in that area? So.
Our portion of the match, our portion of the match, like is that twelve months to pay, or what is that, all upfront? How's that work?
It's, it basically pays as we're building the project.
And we don't have the project completed until like June. You have three years to spend the money.
Right, so this is an overnight done thing, we've got to write a check for three-hundred-thousand dollars.
You just say you're going to have it for the project.
We're committing to those funds. There's also ways that we can probably use other funds to be the match for this fund as far as maybe from Dark County Parks, they're dying to give this community park funding, we've just not been ready to receive it. So, you know, I, I think there's ways that we could help offset the villages' match with some other funding. So we just have to exhaust every effort.
I know the Ohio Department of Natural Resources want it, like theirs is way beyond my ability to write a grant or to look into, but they do offer things like that for parks.
That's what we're going through.
Yeah, this is a no-deal project.
I know, well, maybe they want to help.
There you go. You know, hopefully they'll give us three-hundred-and-six thousand.
Ideally, the first large-scale project that we're going to go after wouldn't be a playground area for little kids and an ADA bathroom on the walking trail. However, sometimes we have to take these opportunities when they fall in our lap. So land and water conservation, this grant's available in Ohio, they're few and far between. Our community, Dave, working with our community, we believe we have a great opportunity. It's, it's a big bite, and you know, I know it's a big bite, but at the same time, you guys wanted to do some renovations, some updating, some modernizing, you want to take advantage of the food truck spaces you've already invested in, putting a men's and women's bathroom there, adding a player area for, you know, kids to play while mom and dad's eating at the food trucks, so on and so forth. Those are all the components that start to develop and more formalize that whole entire area. So there is a good vision for this, I think it fits, I think having a railroad theme park in what we call Railroad Park makes a lot of sense, and...
I got a lot of questions. So we decided to go forward with you. Are we in any financial obligations out the gate, or has it happened after?
Happens after.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
I didn't know if there was any fees to move forward and try to get this grant.
No, we're moving forward with it. And then when you get the grant, they do allow for pre-agreement costs, so if you did spend something, you can count that as part of your local match, if you did. So, but right now, we haven't incurred any costs at all, so.
And that, that I didn't talk about either, but there is local match capabilities, you know, we can go to Wagner Paving, we can go to Walls Brothers, we can, we can have those conversations as well and see if there's any type of, you know...
Support for sponsorship.
Cost aid and support, you know, signage, whatever those capabilities are. If we get a fifty thousand dollar parking lot from Walls because they want to sign up because they're from here, that's, that's money that we get accounted towards our match because it's in kind.
That's kind of like where I was at with doing the Dark County Parks one, there are a lot of companies that want to help. Pepcon was awesome, I don't know if, I mean, it's been a couple of years, but I feel like we could get, they make you break it down and, you know, obviously their funds, but then like All Brothers, Pepcon, I mean, it was just so many of them that were like, yeah, well, hell, can we get a sign on the fence?
Well, those are all parts of this conversation as it evolves. The first step, though, is all being on the same page, saying, let's move forward with this project, and then figuring out how to pay the bills as they come in. That, that's the first commitment.
What's the length of construction?
We think, we think the construction will, we'll probably get the grant award probably, if we get the grant award, we'd probably get it awarded in April or May of twenty-six. And then I had construction out till June of twenty-twenty-seven.
Till about a year.
Yeah, about a year to thirteen months, yeah.
What's the playground, you said they were going to, it's all going to be bolted, so concrete footers are going to be poured underneath the soil, below ground grade?
Yeah, it's called a shallow foundation, that's three meters or less.
Okay.
Got to bolt it down.
Well, I know, I'm just, want to get a hundred percent confirmation on everything.
Yep, yeah, we'll do soil borings and we'll do the right...
Been in construction too long.
So have I, man. I teach every day.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, one, it'll show the citizens of the village that were wanting to do something to improve the village. So I, I say let's try to roll it and see what happens.
I think you and I have talked before, we need place.
Yeah.
If you don't have place, you're not moving forward.
That's the basis of economic development, you have to create place for equal people.
Create a place for young families.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and you know, the things you guys are doing here is exactly correct. I mean, park and recreation is a form of economic development, no, no question about it. I mean, it's, it's, it's placemaking. And then the next thing people start to talk about in communities or downtowns, the next thing they start talking about is housing. So, you know, we've got, we've got multiple communities in Ohio and Kentucky that we're taking a, we're taking a housing approach, economic development, and, and park and recreation in downtown. So you really have, I always want, I always want you guys to keep the housing thing in the back of your mind, to keep applying for that grant, to make sure that, because it brings up the existing housing stock. It really does. And so, and Steve and I talked about this, and Brittany and I talked about this, I mean, if we can do ten houses with that forty or fifty thousand dollars, there's ten houses we just bettered in this community. Whether it's, whether it's new siding, a site of it, or new windows, or new doors, I mean, you know, five or, five or eight thousand dollars does a lot for a house. So that's, but that goes hand in hand, looking at the bigger picture, you know, park and recreation, economic development, housing. So this fits in with that big plan, right? So multifaceted approach to make the villages and city a better community to live, work, and play, right?
And again, this is just conceptual, so as far as the exact location of the parking lot and the bathroom, and we have input on that.
That's all design decisions, this is conceptual.
Like, one thing I've always wanted to see is that made a one-way, connected to the alley that runs out to main.
And I think that makes a lot of sense.
And then we could accommodate that parking lot to affleck that.
Yeah.
Maybe turn it if we need to, I don't know how, you know, I wasn't out there when you laid it out, but...
Haven't laid it out yet.
Correct.
Put it on the area.
But my whole thing is, is I'd love to see that one-way road entering off the state line and exiting out on the main street.
And that's a design decision, in the design plans, we can show that.
Because that way, all the traffic's going to move one way. One, that's going to be safer for young children out there running around. Maybe with the parking, you know, seeing how things lay out, maybe draw more attention to get the food trucks there.
Yeah.
Sounds like you want to be on Park Board. I'm just, you got a lot of good ideas.
This is all I do, all day long, so.
I love it.
Well, you can come on.
So.
I mean, that's a thought I would think of, that you would have...
That would work, and that, and then I think it would work, maybe down the road, somebody puts a little ice cream trailer out there or something, you know, and who sees what happens.
I knew somebody's mom that did that.
I did, too.
One of those shady dice things that weigh an ice cream or whatever.
This was hand-built, really good ice cream.
I'm with you, I'd rather have ice cream.
Me, too.
But, yeah, I like the idea, I think we need to roll the dice for sure and see where it leads us. And if we got three years to pay, that's not bad, I mean, that shouldn't have hit too hard. And then with what you said, you know, reaching out, like even the fence, like she brought up, there's a couple of fence companies that are local.
You have three years to do the project within that three-year period, but remember, the construction period is only over that thirteen months.
Right, but what I'm getting at is like fence company could donate fence maybe, and we advertise for them. I mean, there's so many different options.
Yeah.
I think it's great out there.
I think it's doable, I think it's doable with the splash pad, but that, that turns it into a five-hundred thousand dollar match, and I didn't want to scare you guys. So you guys, I want you to go forward in the project, but at the same time, you know, we have to, you know, understand that this is a commitment, and we have to, you know, if we're awarded, we have to ride it out and see it through. That, that's what has to happen.
Looking at the types of people we want to attract to the town, younger families with children, we're going to set up roots in the community, and currently, there's nothing for those young kids.
Agreed.
If we want to attract those kind of people, we got to start doing something on our end.
You going to let your kids go across the tracks?
Yes.
Oh, this, this is, and by the way, this, this playground is on the right side of the tracks.
That's right.
But it's on the south, it's a joke, it's on the south side of the walking path, right? Steve?
Well, I'm envisioning it in...
Present walking path.
I'm envisioning it on the, what would be the north side of the walking trail, between the gravel lot or the gravel drive and, but that's not been decided yet, we can decide wherever we want to put that.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to upset anybody, but if we have a derailment on the railroad, you got to have some footage here before you get to the playground. You never know what train is coming through, is going to have a hot axle.
No, I don't disagree. I don't disagree at all.
Because you got a mile and a half of train that can push a lot of cars out many, many feet, and will have dead people.
But we don't have the same train.
And I'm not playing devil's advocate.
There is no guarantee.
But I've worked multiple train derailments in my thirty-year career in this community, and none of them's ever gone that far.
Yep.
But not to say that it can't.
Well, a flammable situation would be a whole thing different, too.
When you, when you start talking...
By the way, if we put up a fence, it won't matter anyways.
For a rail.
For a rail, it's not going to work.
But I can see that going between, I can see that going between the walking path and the residential houses in there, that would be a...
That's about where it's at, that's about where it's at.
Ideal location.
That's fine as well.
Could all be fitted in there.
So if there's no more questions, we can end the public hearing, and then you guys, if you choose tonight, you can pass a resolution to move this in forward, get the application finished, turn a concept into a plan.
Can you give me minutes tomorrow?
Yeah.
Awesome. Oh, by the way, Brittany's awesome, keep her, give her a rip.
She signed her contract.
She's been great to work with, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, it's the end of the public hearing. Call this meeting to order. Village Council for November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Village of Union City, Ohio. Will open with a word of prayer.
Good day to the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Guide us in our decisions with all people in mind for the betterment of our community. God illuminate our decisions at this meeting, amen. Nameth Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
We'll rise for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, rule call.
Sandra Hedro, here. Ron Rammer.
Here.
Eric Ress. Eddie Lang.
Here.
Homer Simon.
Present.
David Walkman.
Yep, here.
Okay, motion for consent of the agenda.
Motion.
Tag it.
Ron Rammer.
Yes.
Eric Ress.
Yes.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Simon.
Yes.
David Walkman.
David?
Yes.
Sandra Hedro?
Yes.
Okay, mixed up, village citizens. Not sure where Dixie's at tonight.
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Project updates. Anything different than last week? Administrative reports, nothing, committee reports. CIC met on October twenty-ninth, and you've got a copy of the minutes in your packet.
You should have a copy of the CIC memo. Right there, under that.
Okay, did you, did you have something with CIC?
No, yes.
CIC, no, okay. Going to do that later?
Yeah.
We'll do that under new business. Pretty self-explanatory there. When, most of you know, we had Preston Dieter that was looking at that admin building over there, and now he's probably about two to five years away of putting something down here. So we've had another individual come to us, Dustin Parrish, that's interested in that building over there. And he gives sort of a project on third pager, sort of a project outline of what he wants to do. I've not met with the guy, but Steve did. Basically, if you read the meeting minutes, the CIC is wanting to move forward with selling selling that to Dustin. I believe, I'll have to do some checking, but I believe the property is currently under the village's name, and we would have to get that transferred over to the CIC.
Correct.
And then CIC could sell it to.
And we really need to get through tonight's meeting, hire the attorney to get all that documentation drawn up to make those moves, but that would be what we would do.
What kind of money are we looking at for the building?
Uh, we haven't settled on any terms. I've given, and I don't know what you have in the package, but we've provided just some general verbiage on what could be done. They've discussed selling it. They've discussed doing it for a three-year commitment to, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 worth of improvements made to the building. So I don't know which direction will actually go because they were supposed to meet, I think, tomorrow evening.
Yeah, dude.
So again, CIC.
Moving forward to.
Like I said, they have, there's been no decision made.
You got it. So the meeting, a motion to.
I don't know.
I don't really know that you need anything. We're just kind of bringing it into the conversation until the CIC approves something to present to the council. I don't know that there's anything to do other than just, I want you guys to be aware of what we're talking about and what's been presented to us.
How many actual office units does he think he's going to fit in that bill?
He hasn't necessarily identified exactly what he's going to do with it. He's talked about a possible daycare type.
I said, there's a lot of different things going on.
Yeah. So he's not exactly settled on a business direction. The first thing he wants to do is put a new roof on and address, you know, the interior of the building and modernize and update that. He is a brick mason by trade. He has obviously construction capabilities himself. So he owns a few buildings in downtown Richmond and some other small communities around Wayne County, and he works up here with Todd and, um, yeah, Landis and on other building projects. And he's just kind of felt like this could be a community that he wanted to invest in. I showed him three properties, and that's the one that he kind of wants to pursue.
Sounds good to me. We'll see what they come up with.
Yeah.
Couple of recommendations that I think we threw out there to the CIC. One was to, you know, you could do the traditional method and try and sell the building to them. But I believe everybody, most of the people in this council knows the state of repairs on that building. I mean, you're not going to get somebody that's going to want to dump $30,000 or $40,000 into a building that you're going to have to put 100 into it to make it, you know, habitable. Or, or is it a deal like we presented to the CIC that you could sell that building, the CIC could sell that building for a dollar with like clawback clauses in it, you know? If he has to invest so much into that building because currently that's not on the tax rules. It belongs to the village. I mean, that building's not doing anything for us currently. We don't make a dollar, not even off the real estate taxes. So to get a business in there, get it, you know, that building would be reappraised, goes back on the tax rules. We'd be seeing some, some benefit off of it, not including any employees that would go or would work out of that building would also be paying village income tax. So there's a couple of ways to look at that. But basically, we've got another meeting to discuss tomorrow night and then bring recommendations back to the council. Because currently, it's in the council's hands. We would have to get that property moved over to the CIC, same as the industrial park out there.
And I didn't want to go too fast because we didn't have an attorney, so.
So the main thing was just bring everybody up to speed that we do have somebody interested in putting a business in that building. Okay, next up, any other questions on that or discussions? Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2025 dash oh oh three, resolution to employ a village solicitor. And that's what was presented at the last meeting. We would be hiring Paul Wagner out of Greenville, Ohio to be the village solicitor. Is there an emergency in that resolution?
And just so you're aware, we've gone an extra two weeks, and I still have no other attorneys returning the phone calls or messages, so.
How soon can he start?
Uh, in my last conversation with him, he'll start as soon as we get the documentation back to him.
So if we set like November 15th, that gives him two weeks, close to two weeks.
Probably start November 5th.
Be at the next meeting?
He'd probably start November 5th.
He would probably start yet this week if we got him all the documentation, but I mean, for sure, I'll be meeting with him. Brittany will be meeting with him and kind of bringing him up over the last six months of what we've gotten in the fire, so.
Here's the first reading.
First reading?
Yep.
Um, resolution 2025 dash oh three, resolution to employ a village solicitor and declaring an emergency.
Motion to advance. Motion to declare an emergency and advance by title only.
Yes.
Eddie Lang?
Yes.
Homer Stoman?
Yes.
David Walkman?
Yes.
Shanann Tedrow?
Yes.
Ron Rammer?
Yes.
Eric Ress?
Yes.
Eddie Lang?
Yes.
Homer Stoman?
Yes.
David Walkman?
Yes.
Shanann Tedrow?
Yes.
Ron Rammer?
Yes.
Eric Ress?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get a written, they'll sign. Brittany will have it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. Under resolutions and ordinances and resolutions, we do have this resolution of authorization to proceed with that park grant for River Park with Mr. Keizer.
Ohio Department of Natural Resources, land and water conservation grant.
What number is it?
It'd be resolution 2025 dash zero zero four.
And we would make this resolution 2025 dash zero zero four.
And looking at the date on there, it probably needs to be an emergency. You know, you don't have time to do three readings.
No.
Grant deadlines, the 14th.
Yeah. That's why he was doing it tonight with the, with the public meeting. It'll be a resolution of authorization to proceed forward with this grant application for, to be submitted to the ODNR. And declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion to declare an emergency and advance by title only.
Second.
Homer Stoman?
Yes.
David Walkman?
Yes.
Shanann Tedrow?
Yes.
Ron Rammer?
Yes.
Eric Ress?
Yes.
Eddie Lang?
Yes.
Okay, resolution of authorization to proceed with this ODNR grant for the Village of Union City, Ohio down at Railroad Park. That's resolution 2025 dash oh four. Third and final reading, resolution 2025 dash oh four, resolution of authorization to proceed forward with this grant application to the ODNR for the park down at Railroad Move to accept.
Second. David Walkman?
Yes.
Shanann Tedrow?
Yes.
Ron Rammer?
Yes.
Eric Ress?
Yes.
Eddie Lang?
Yes.
Homer Stoman?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, I've got a couple of things. First, I think most of you were in here, I'm not sure if you were here, when he was talking about, Mr. Keizer was letting us know that at the start of the public hearing, that the Village of Union City, Ohio received a 40, was it 40 or 50?
40 grand.
40, 40, $40,000 grant. Basically, that's for fixing up homes in the village.
And we have no information on what the application process is because shortly after that was awarded, everything shut down, and we don't have the paperwork.
Okay.
We have the award letter, but that's it. So as soon as the government opens back up, we'll start getting all that done.
Okay.
Do we need to like implement an application process for our citizens to kind of apply?
There will be once I get the paperwork.
Okay, so it's continuing, I get it.
See what the government requires of it.
It makes sense. I didn't know if it was similar to the same one that Indiana side had, so it kind of knew the.
It's very similar. It's a little bit different. It's got a little bit different rules. This was kind of a left-handed conversation he was having with somebody on another project, and they said, well, the state of Ohio hasn't issued all these funds for housing renovations for impoverished communities. And he called me, and I said, yeah, let's try, and quickly put it together and sent it in with our metrics, and we were awarded 40 grand. So that's how quick it happened.
It's seriously like seven days.
We're going to, so we got that. When, so once the shutdown stops, that will go into effect. So we need to put a plan to make the citizens know this is aware.
Once I get the paperwork from the rule development, and I know exactly what the criteria is, then yes, we'll put that together. We'll blast it on the website, social media, everywhere that we can, and we'll start accepting applications, so.
And those are for family-owned homes, not rental property, correct?
Gen, I don't know for sure, but generally, yes, it's.
He said it would be low-income.
Low-income, single-family homes that are basically occupied by the owner.
What, it sounds like it's probably ignorant question, but what is a low-income, what is the parameters for that?
It's got to do with our low mod income level. It's a national stat that's tracked as far as what the low mod income is for Union City.
Okay, so in other words, it varies from city to city and?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably all those details will shake out once.
It'll all shake out, and it's all going to be income verified. You can't, you're driving a $100,000 sports car, getting access to the public. It's designed to help people that can't afford the license and things like that to get some.
Maybe next time. That truck you got out there, it won't pass.
No, it's not. It's a noise car, and then you look at the driveway, and we're both out. Okay. Okay, and under new business, next up, the Centerville Township Emergency Medical and Fire Service Protection Contract. You want to explain this, Brittany?
Yeah, this is all of our new, their mutually contract with the fire department. Since the funds are distributed, or not distributed, deposited into the general fund account, I just wanted to just bring it to your attention because the wind does have to sign them.
It looks like it progresses each year for five years.
Yes.
Is this the only contract we had up this year? Aren't there a couple more?
No, there's more. I just talked ahead about it, due to, but Jackson Township and then.
Washington?
Yeah. Another one of them, maybe?
Okay.
I don't know, actually, I probably could play.
I think the Wayne Township and the other contracts up too, for Union City.
So all you need from council is approval for them to allow me to sign this, correct?
Pretty much.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it again.
Shanann Tedrow?
Yeah.
Ron Rammer?
Yes.
Eric Ress?
Yes.
Eddie Lang?
Yes.
Homer Stoman?
Yes.
David Walkman?
Yes.
Okay, emergency business or ordinances? Call the council.
I know last year, we had good intentions on getting the Christmas trees, like the schools involved with like a decorating contest. Is that something we're going to try to do this year? I don't mind.
Can you help me coordinate it?
Huh?
Can you help me coordinate it?
I'd be more than happy. Ms. Kemp actually asked me about it, so I told her I'd reach out.
I also need somebody that's interested in doing a mural. Those All Brothers have set that container down there.
Yeah.
East end of the lot, they want it painted and then a mural.
I'm sure Ashley Osterman would be able to be interested in some point when he did that. I can reach out. My stepdaughter has, her is a teacher. It's okay tomorrow if I talk to her and kind of get her idea with what she'd like.
You can leave my contact number if she has questions.
Okay. Is there any update with the playground equipment that they were replacing or fixing down there at East Side?
There was a note on the whiteboard at the village office that says, finish install.
Yeah, so they, they had a piece stolen.
Yeah, did that ever get fabricated?
And we've located the replacement, and I believe we have the replacement ready to go. I just don't think we've had the time to do it. But I'll work with that.
Last thing, I swear, there's a couple of broken picnic tables down there. I said something, I guess I said a week or two ago, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's the little mini ones, but.
Little wooden ones. Kids been jumping on them, broke them.
Will we get addressed right away?
Thank you.
Do you have any dates when you're on start leaf cleanup and stuff yet, Steve?
We're transitioning out of brush pickup this week, and we'll, the leaf boxes are ready to go. They'll be on the trucks next week, and we'll start leaves next week.
Probably second week in November, then?
Whatever next week is, yeah.
Second. Second week.
We could, probably Thanksgiving.
Yeah, this will be the last week we intentionally go pick up brush day to day. We'll start leaves on Monday, and brush will be by phone call or request. We'll pick up brush, or if we see a pile, we'll get it. They won't be out weekly doing brush pickup.
Next council meeting will be November 18th at 6:00 PM. Uh, executive session.
I'm going to call it executive session to discuss finance.
Okay.
I've got one more thing before we do that.
Correct.
It just popped into my head. Now it's gone. Oh, the property at one twenty East Oak, so the property owner of that property failed to file for the eviction notice with our county courts until, um, I'll tell you the That did not get filed until the, like, the twenty-fourth of October. It has been filed. We have gone on to the property, questionably, but we put personnel on the property, dump trucks, and took everything away, except for the trailer because that is his personal property, the squatter. So once the eviction process has gone through the courts, we will get the trailer removed, but all the trash and debris and everything, we had picked up as of last weekend, so
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
And that cleanup cost, is that ours?
We assess it to the property.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Steve?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, executive session.